We are up. Red light is on. Okay, good morning, everyone. Welcome, everybody, to the Rankin County Board of Supervisors Board Meeting, April 6th. At this time, we'll call it to order. This time, we'd like to have Craig Slay, if you wouldn't mind, do an invocation.
[inaudible] Probably coming before you now, with hearts heavy, Lord, over the passing of our judge. I pray, Father, that you will continue to be with this family. Father, I pray for our community as we get through the process of grieving and healing. I pray, Father, that you will help these gentlemen this morning as they continue their service for this community. They would do so in a way that's pleasing to you, that you would give them wisdom, Father, to make decisions that are in the best interest of the county. Father, I thank you that you give us all the privilege of service. Thank you for this open forum that we become and conduct the business of the county. And thank you for the lives that have been sacrificed so that we can enjoy these freedoms. We pray this in the name of Jesus.
Amen. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna start off, I'm gonna tell you, we're gonna start off, and we are gonna change a couple things. First, we're gonna go ahead with public comments. At this time, we're gonna do a resolution commending Officer Daniel Strickland. And then we'll move on down to a couple more. But we're gonna recess early today and come back due to the Judge Fairley's memorial. And we're gonna, we'll be leaving early, so just telling you all, it's probably about 10:30, 10:15, 10:30, we'll recess. So those of you who know ahead of time why we'll be. So we're gonna, we're gonna jump through the agenda and hit a couple of high spots, because so many of you here. But then we will be recessing and returning. But anyway, at this time, we'll go ahead with public comments at the resolution for Daniel Strickland.
I'd like for Sheriff, you will come forward. Sheriff pointed out, notably so, that we have a gentleman here, a law enforcement here in our community, that deserving of recognition for some exemplary actions. His name is Daniel Strickland. Daniel, come forward, stand by the sheriff, please. We are pleased, Board of Supervisors, to resolve and commend Law Enforcement Officer Daniel Strickland for exemplary actions in rescuing a child from a potentially life-threatening situation at the Rankin County multipurpose arena. Whereas Rankin County, Mississippi, is abundantly blessed with law enforcement personnel who act quickly, professionally, and courageously whenever there is an emergency situation calling for action. Whereas on March the 15th of 2015, Rankin County Law Enforcement Officer Daniel Strickland was providing security at the Rankin County multipurpose arena on Marquette Road, at the time a nine-year-old young lady and Rankin County resident named Dee Dee Ward was at the facility riding horses. And while on the premises, Miss Ward accidentally swallowed a bottle cap which lodged in her windpipe, causing her to choke. At the sight of the choking child, cries for help rang out from bystanders. Officer Daniel Strickland immediately responded to the cries for help, had the presence of mind to call for medical assistance, and upon arriving at the child's location, immediately recognized the emergency situation and initiated the heimlich maneuver in an effort to dislodge the obstruction. By continuing to administer aid, Officer Strickland successfully dislodged the obstruction, and the young child's breathing quickly returned to normal. By acting quickly, professionally, and expertly, Officer Strickland is celebrated as a hero today, and Miss Ward is alive and well. Whereas the rescue of the young child is a testimony to the bravery and heroism of Officer Strickland, and a further testimony to the exceptional training he has received in preparation for becoming a law enforcement officer. Officer Strickland stands as an example of the quality of citizens serving our Rankin County community with selfless devotion to our fellow citizens. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Rankin County Board Supervisors that Rankin County Law Enforcement Officer Daniel Strickland is deserving of high praise and special recognition from the citizens of Rankin County for his extraordinary act of heroism in the rescue of Dee Dee Ward on March the 15th of 2015. Daniel, I've known you for a long time. We go to church together. This is a friend of mine, very proud of me. I've watched him grow up, but I've watched him become a man and a servant of our community. And I'm especially proud of how you have conducted yourself. And I'm really thankful that the sheriff recognizes quality folks and makes sure they come to work with him. This board is thankful for your act of heroism. We wanted to commend you, and this is for you to display. We have extra copies, we'll make sure the sheriff gets a copy. But I'd like for each and every person here today to join me in thanking Daniel Strickland for his act.
You got the floor if you wanna say something?
I just want to say, you know, a lot of people don't realize, you know, we have 213 employees over here now, 82 deputies, and I tell you what, you know, we're just blessed in Rankin County with the law enforcement. You know, if the biggest complaint we have nowadays is, you know, dogs running loose and a little bit of theft here and there, but, you know, the guys do such a good job with violent crime that you have something like this that is thrown in there, it shows his training, his reaction, he didn't, I mean, he didn't even hesitate, immediately jumped into action there, and that's what, you know, all my guys, men and women do over there. And I'm just so proud of them, and it's an honor to be sheriff, and it's an honor to have all these people. And if you don't mind, everybody's in the sheriff's office, come up here, I want to get a group picture around everybody in the sheriff's office before we leave.
[inaudible]
[inaudible]
[laughing]
[inaudible]
[laughing]
[inaudible]
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 [laughing]
[applause]
Yeah.
Ken, you gonna let the sheriff handle it from here?
[inaudible]
Okay.
Mr. President, if I may, I've got one item that would be in the nature of public comment that I would like to share with the board.
Okay.
Mr. President, one quick item of public comment. The board's already noted the untimely passing of Judge Fairley. I have a copy of a resolution and order that's been issued by the Rankin County Chancery Court. With your permission, I would like to read that into the record and also make this part of the official minutes of today's meeting. This information was provided to us by your chancery clerk. Whereas the Honorable Dan Hendrick Fairley, Chancellor of the 20th, Ms. Laura, can you please come read this?
Whereas the Honorable Dan Hendrick Fairley, Chancellor of the 20th Chancery Court District, State of Mississippi, departed this life on Friday, April 3rd, 2015. And whereas, due to the passing of this honorable and Christian gentleman, the citizens of the community have suffered a great loss. And whereas the Chancery Court of Rankin County, Mississippi, has forever lost a distinguished judge and a member of the bar who has presided over the court with distinction. And whereas the Chancery Court desires to honor and pay tribute to this respected judge who is a loyal friend and a colleague of the court. And whereas funeral services have been set for Honorable Dan Fairley on Monday 6th, April 6th, 2015. It is therefore ordered by the understanding senior chancellor presiding over the Chancery Court of Rankin County, Mississippi, through his execution of this order, that Chancery Court of Rankin County, Mississippi, be closed for business on the 6th day of April 2015 from the hours of 9:30 a.m. through 5:00 p.m. It is further ordered by the undersigned senior chancellor presiding over the Chancery Court of Rankin County, Mississippi, that the Court Records Division of the Office of Chancery Clerk of Rankin County, Mississippi, be closed for business on the 6th day of April 2015 from the hours of 9:30 a.m. until 1:30 p.m. So moved and ordered this 6th day of April 2015, and that is signed by John S. Grant, the 3rd Senior Chancellor.
That should just be made a part of the official records and minutes of the meeting.
All right.
Okay. Motion. Do we need to make a motion?
No, sir.
No? Okay.
No motion.
Where do you want to go next, Jared?
You want to come down to Craig Slay?
We're going to, we're going to old business.
Make a motion, approve.
The consent agenda?
Well, old business.
Make a motion to approve the minutes, March 16th, 2015.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Wilcox.
Second.
Second, Mr. Keith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, next, consent agenda.
Motion approved.
Motion approved, Mr. Bishop.
Second.
Second, Mr. Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, now, I'd like to skip down onto, skip through this, go to Craig Slay, Board Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, the first grouping here is the setting of public hearings. They are all being set for the same day, May the 4th, 2015, at 9:00 a.m., items A through G under Section 10 of the agenda. I would request that a motion be made to set items A through G for public hearing on May the 4th, 2015, at 9:00 a.m.
Make a motion, we approve these, to set those public hearings for May the 4th at 9:00 a.m.
Okay. Motion to set these public hearings, Mr. Wilcox?
Second.
Second, Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Item H under Section 10 of the agenda is a public hearing on the Nancy Barcdale conditional use request, 120 Evans Ridge Drive, District 4 property. At this time, we'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if there's anyone here to speak in opposition to the Nancy Barcdale conditional use request. Anyone? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition to that matter. We'll close the public hearing, it'd be appropriate to take action.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion approved, Mr. Johnson. Second, Mr. Wilcox. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. President, next item is a public hearing on the Taffa Porter conditional use request, 345 North Enic Grove Road. We'll open that public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the Taffa Porter conditional use request? Anyone? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition to that. It'd be appropriate to close that public hearing and take action.
Okay. Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by myself, second, Mr. Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
The next item is the public hearing on the Joe Frazier Old Fanon Road self-storage conditional use request, 1188 Old Fanon Road, District 5 property. We'll open that public hearing. The Office of Community Development received a report on the Old Fanon Road self-storage expanded, that had expanded their mini warehouse. Is this being continued? Yes, okay. Mr. President, I'm given to understand, is there anyone here to speak in favor of the Old Fanon Road self-storage request? Anyone? Are you Mr. Frazier? Yeah. Okay. If you'll come forward, please. My understanding is that Mr. Frazier has been instructed to provide certain details to your consulting engineer. That information has not been provided. And so we are prepared today to request to the board that this particular public hearing be continued until April 15th at 9:00 a.m. And I've asked Mr. Frazier to come up in the event that you have any questions of him at this time. Otherwise, we will continue this public hearing until April the 15th at 9:00 a.m. So on the 15th? This will give, this will give Mr. Frazier an opportunity to actually provide the documentation that's being requested by the engineer, or get with the engineer if there's any confusion about what is required before we have the public hearing. There's no need to go forward when your engineer doesn't even have the data to make a recommendation to you about the project.
Okay.
So we understand the 15th is gonna be the day that we have everything we need. Yes. The work has been done. And I talked to Greg Bonds from Beacon Construction this morning, and he told me that he had sent something to the engineer a week or so ago. He may not have had time to look at it. Did you get anything from him? No, sir. I've had email from the bond, and the last email that I received last week was that he wanted me to meet with him out on the site. Okay. But it's not been done. That's, that's what I got from him this morning also.
Okay. Okay, will that be ample time for you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. President, we'll move then to the next item, which is the continuation of the Richard Smith rezoner request, 449 Williams Road. This is District 1 property. Mr. Smith is requesting to rezone a 9.19 acre parcel at 449 Williams Road from RE1A to C2. If the zoning change is approved, he is requesting a conditional use permit for construction of a 2,508 square foot convenience store. The construction is proposed to be insulated concrete brick. This is a continuation of a public hearing that was opened previously. We do have prepared for the board's consideration today, should the rezoning request be approved, we have some conditional uses that we would like to go over with you. So at this time, we will reconvene the public hearing that was started previously. And I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Richard Smith rezoning request. Anyone? All right, if you'll come forward, please. State your name and address. Mr. President, gentlemen, my name is David Pullen. I own the adjoining property to this property that Mr. Smith wants to rezone as commercial. We are all residential in this whole area. The, we are in opposition of the rezoning to commercial of any of our property around us. I have talked to all the, all my neighbors adjoining me, all my neighbors up and down the road, and everyone that I have talked to is very against this. We feel like we are in a country setting, and I have lived there for, on my property, for 35 years. And I'm straight across the street adjoining this property. And we like to think of ourselves as country people. And even though we're, we're lack, almost like forest land as far as our tax structure. And there's no one that I have talked to in the neighborhood that is in favor of rezoning. We have property adjoining this property that Mr. Smith has acquired. There's lots of property on down the road, and we, we feel like that once this zoning is done, that it opens the door to rezone the property on down the road as commercial. And, and we, we're very opposed to it. As far as the store, I really don't have a lot of opposition to a store, but I, we as a neighborhood, we, we don't see the value of a store being built in this corner of the road. If you know, if you're familiar with Williams Road, this, this property is just a big curve there. So if he puts a store there, the store is going, the traffic's gonna have to be coming in and out of this curve. It's gonna create a dangerous situation for, for traffic, for the community. We, we have a general dollar store being built just right there in Monterey. Florence, the city of Florence is two miles from this property. And all our neighbors, my friends, you know, if I need anything, I just, I can go two miles to the store. We don't need a store here. So we're, we are all in very opposed this rezoning of this property. And while I'm at, while I'm, while I'm speaking, I want to commend Sheriff Bailey, you and your men for the work you're doing, our Rolling Hill subdivision, which joins my property, and all the McLean neighborhood down there. Y'all doing a fine job, and you have quietened it down tremendously, and we thank you. So I don't know much more that I could say, you know, in my opposition to this. I don't have nothing against Mr. Smith, I barely know Mr. Smith. But my opposition, my main opposition, is the rezoning of our commercial, of our residential property. And like I say, once we get one spot rezoned, then what's to keep the rest of down the road from later on being rezoned? And maybe, you know what, being moved in and being built. We just, we like our country setting, and we like, we like our quiet neighborhood. And I just don't know what else to say, but please consider this, the neighborhood does not want this. Mr. Smith don't live in our neighborhood, he lives on down the road in Monterey. So thank you for your time.
Let me just say something. You know, if this is rezoned, it doesn't automatically mean other property will be rezoned, and if it have, it would still have to come here to apply also, and everything would have to be approved here the same way. It's not like it's, once one thing's done, the rest of it can be done. And it won't, in fact, it won't impede on anyone else's taxes. That's something that I think has gone around, if you, if you, the taxes will go up, and that's not the case at all. The only, the only taxes that really would go up would be Mr. Smith's taxes on that piece of property just because of the use of the property. It wouldn't affect anyone else. And I'm just saying that for the general people that have heard that. Okay?
I understand.
Good.
But also understand, you know, once, once a, once a spot is rezoned, then it opens the door for the adjoining land there to be easier to be rezoned.
All right. I just, I just wanted to make sure you understood. Okay?
Thank you. Ms. Ma'am?
My name's Mary Boggs, I live at 479 Williams Road, and my property, it joins Mr. Smith's property on the, I guess you'd say, the north. And I'm with Mr. Pullen, I don't want it rezoned, but I also am against the store. If the store doesn't make it, and he doesn't sell it and just closes it up, then that's gonna deteriorate, and it's gonna take away from the property, the value of my property. So I'm against the whole thing. We are a country setting, a family-oriented neighborhood, and I feel like it needs to stay that way. I already have debris on my fence from where they cut the woods, cut the trees down. They left debris on my fence and didn't clean it up.
Okay. Okay. Right. Is there anyone else who's taking opposition? Anyone? [inaudible] Good morning. Morning. My name's Tony McLean, I live at 466 Williams Road in Florence. And to the Board of Supervisors, I along with other residents in the impacted area, feel that the request does not meet the criteria for rezoning, which states there was a mistake in the original zoning. Also, that the character of the neighborhood has changed in such an extent to justify reclassification. And there is a public need for the rezoning. And the proposed rezoning be consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan. Now, the proposed rezoning has the appearance of spot zoning, which is defined in the current Rankin County zoning ordinance. The improper rezoning or zoning of a lot or parcel of land to benefit an owner for a use incompatible with surrounding uses. While such spot zoning may not be illegal per se, it is generally regarded as an improper practice. A rezoning of the subject's property to commercial simply means to us putting the need of a single property over the needs and concerns of the majority of the persons who own property and reside in the area. In short, it would be an economic profit for one to the detriment of the masses. It was stated in the last meeting that there was some commercial uses in the area, and that one was operating illegally. It should be noted that both of those businesses were in operation prior to the adoption and amendment of the Rankin County zoning ordinance. Therefore, the businesses are by definition of the Rankin County ordinance, nonconforming uses, which are grandfathered. Nonconforming uses cannot be used to determine a change in the land use character of the area, which is one of the legal requirements for rezoning. Even so, I don't know that presidents have been set to use illegally standing businesses to justify granting rezoning approval. And finally, it is incumbent upon the applicant to prove by clear and convincing evidence that there has been a change in the land use character of the area, and that a public need exists for the requested commercial zoning. There has not been any substantial evidence to document that the land use character of the area has changed, nor is there a public need for commercially zoned properties in the area. We have reviewed minutes from board meetings several years back, and we have not found or seen any zoning cases in the McCullough, McLean, and Livingston, and, and Williams Road area. In short, we vehemently oppose the rezoning of the property to commercial, and we respectfully request that the rezoning be denied. We want to maintain the integrity of and the residential nature of our community. And if I may, in going back to my seat, I would like to again emphasize, if I didn't leave it at my seat, there, I have zoning maps that it's the Rankin County Future Land Use Plan. And again, it shows all of the residential and agricultural area with one spot where the commercial rezoning request is being made. All of the other surrounding areas, as has been mentioned previously, is either residential or agricultural in, in nature, and that is our major concern. Again, Mr. Smith, I do know him, and there's nothing personal about this, it's just that we are very concerned about our community, and wish to have it remain as is. And we thank you very much for your time.
I like you. I think, Renee, Craig, both of you, you said something about it not been any, no rezoning, or something about rezoned by mistake, or somewhere in there about something had been rezoned by mistake?
Right. That was the requirement.
What was rezoned by mistake?
No, he was indicating that a rezoning, a basis for rezoning Right. Could be that a piece of property was zoned in
No, he was indicating that a rezoning, a basis for rezoning could be that a piece of property was zoned initially by mistake. That's a basis for rezoning.
Right.
Okay, okay.
In this particular case, there does not appear to be any mistake.
And also the grandfathering, or I want to address that. So you want to address that?
I'd be glad to. Uh, I believe this is a reference to a piece of property that is, uh, not too far from the proposed location here that we're discussing that has been operating as a commercial business, uh, and that that operation of a commercial business, uh, predates the adoption of zoning, which occurred in two thousand and four. Not, that would create a non-conforming use where the operation of that business was different from the zoning that was applied to that property at the time of adoption of zoning, and that appears to be the case. The grandfathering status is retained, but only insofar as the use of the property does not meaningfully or materially change or cease to operate. And in this particular ca, uh, case, although it's not really relevant to what we're talking about.
Right.
Just to answer your question.
But I mean, it was answering, I was trying to answer his question because he had brought that up.
Correct. Uh, this, in this particular case, the opinion of your staff, especially your legal staff, is that that is no longer a non-conforming permitted use because it ceased to operate for a requisite period of time, which is six months. Also, uh, additional commercial uses were brought to bear on that property. That is, it changed from what it was at the time of the grandfathering into something else or more. And that would take away the ability to, to, uh, call that a non-conforming use. So what happens is that that is no longer a permitted use, and the appropriate way to handle that is that if they want to continue operating as a commercial business in that area, they would need to go through the permitting process, just like everybody else. The rezoning process, permitting process, conditional use, uh, everything.
Public hearing, the whole thing.
Just like what we're doing here, uh, on this particular piece of property. So it would, it would be, uh, it's not relevant to the discussion that we're here on today.
Right. But it-
But it actually, it is relevant because how could we vote for one or vote down one and then allow another?
Yeah.
I, I don't see how I could do that.
Yeah. It's a practical reality, Jay.
Yeah.
Uh, but it's not relevant for the purpose of evaluating this request.
But it does factor in, I see, yeah.
It does.
But, uh, what I wanted to be clear was that, I believe, because it had eventually shut down, so basically it has to go through the same thing also. And I know it's not relevant to this case, but because you had brought it up, I wanted it to be, be out so he would, it could explain that.
Right. And, and we're aware of that, and as you say, it's, uh, really not, it's relevant, relevant in a way. But, uh, we're concerned that that be used to, to, uh, uh, grant approval on, on that basis. We just don't feel that that is a strong enough point to justify enough to carry this process over to approval. That's, that, that's our main concern.
Okay.
And I do have, uh, some additional signatures. At what point would be feasible to turn those in?
Right now, you got them right now. It's fine. You can go ahead and hand them to John.
That's-
We'll make those part of the-
And that's one question I have. Renee, do you have a, Renee or John, do y'all have numbers on, in favor of, against, or anything like that so far to this?
They were about the same. We had approximately eighty in favor and eighty in opposition.
So about a fifty-fifty?
I've got the same base as Mr. Smith.
You've already, you've already verified the eighty and eighty within that vicinity? You've already, uh, verified the eighty and eighty within that close vicinity? Okay.
If I'm not mistaken, my count differs from that slightly. I know that there was some signatures on the back of some of those sheets initially, that we gave her initially.
Right.
We were closer to ninety signatures, then, you know, it's not a big, um, difference there. But we did have, uh, additional amounts. This is here, we have approximately eighty more signatures. And this is in the impacted area. We don't, we didn't go out to the fringes and that kind of thing.
Right.
Of our area to obtain those.
Okay.
Is there anyone else who's speaking opposition?
Could we all stand who are in opposition to that just?
Certainly.
To let you know that we wanted that for residential, we have no need for this.
At this time, we would ask Mr. Smith, the applicant, to come forward.
Sir, I don't think you brought your support with you today.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have my support right beside me. I really don't have anything else to add to the statement I made on, on last time, uh, due to scheduling, due to my work schedule. I've been pretty concentrated on just letting things stay the way I presented them the first time. There is a need for the convenience store in the area. There have been several people come to me and asked me when our, we'll be opening. However, I look at this once again from a standpoint of community, family, husband and wife. The reason I say that, anytime you have a fifty-fifty, like we had last time, split, you're splitting the community, you're splitting the family, whether it goes up, or whether it's approved or whether it's not approved, there's still gonna be opposition in the neighborhood when people look at other people and talk. But just to go back, I've invested a lot of money in, in this project. When Brother McLean was speaking, my opposition in the back was quiet, so I asked if they would be quiet also while presenting my side. Like I said, I've, I've invested a lot of money in this. Uh, Mrs., uh, one of the person that got upset, I do not live in the community, but I grew up in the community, as I stated before. I am a property owner in the community. So it's not like I'm that far. The stores are not two miles away. Maybe the city limits of Florence are two miles away, but roughly each direction is about four and a half miles to the nearest convenience store. So that does bring the need there. In addition to that, I have considered if the opposition does not want the store that bad, I mean, that much, they can purchase the land. So evidently, they have not come up with the money. So therefore, I will go forward. This is the free enterprise. Whether I build it or somebody else build it, if I sell it to somebody and somebody else come back before the board later on, change is gonna happen. It may not happen today, but change will happen. Nobody never thought we'd have a Dollar General at the corner of Monterey and four sixty-nine. Change is gonna happen, and when you don't wanna change, you don't wanna grow. The other part I want to add, and I apologize for the debris on the latest fence. This is the first note, notification that I have of it. If it need to be cleaned off, I'll clean it off. My last thing that I want to propose is this. Instead of zoning, rezoning, the nine acres, uh, we'll look at zoning, rezoning, the two acres that's required to put the store on. Also, to deal with the other commercial property in the area, that is a factor. That is a factor because if, if you allow one person to operate, so now what happens is there may be opposition against the other person that's already operating. And then consideration would have to be taken on what did we just do? What would we, what will we do and how will we do it? So now we once again got the community split against the community, family split against family, husband split against wife. And for the curve is concerned, according to the engineer, and we would have to cut the entire bank down where you have visibility coming around that curve. That was one of the reasons we stopped progress on the project because we had to come to the hearing. We was in the, in the middle of doing a topo study in order to get the elevations of the land and have, uh, the county engineer come out and clean, I mean, and inspect where we was trying to cut the, the hill down. So this is one person right now versus many. You know, I came only with one person. So this is all I got to say. I'm not a bad guy. Like they say, everybody in the community know me. I hope I'm well-respected. And just like last time, I spoke to each one. I hope to speak to each one today. I have no personal grudge. Like I said, this is not a capital. This county is free enterprise. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who's speaking in favor? P one?
Mr. President, I don't see any, any additional speakers at this time. At this time, we'll close that public hearing on the rezoning request. And again, we're gonna take these separately. Uh, the conditional use, obviously not necessary if the board chooses not to rezon. The conditional use would only come into play after the rezoning is granted, uh, if it's going to be granted. So at this time, it would be appropriate to take action. I will give the board a couple of thoughts, uh, on rezoning generally. You've heard basically the statement of the law as given by Mr. Smith concerning rezoning. At the end of the day, the practical reality is that decisions about zoning, interpretation of your zoning ordinance, whether or not to grant a rezoning request is committed to the sound discretion of the board. If the board is convinced that there is enough convincing, clear and convincing evidence of a need for the use in the vicinity, of a continuation of the changing character and quality of the residential area over toward a more commercial area, then it would be appropriate for the board to consider that in deliberating whether or not to grant the rezoning request. At the end of the day, it's your decision and it will fall to you with your discretion to determine whether or not it's appropriate to take action. Nobody else can make that decision for you.
What about the, uh, fact that you talked about changing things to a two acres rather than whole property?
Unfortunately, what is before you is an application on nine point one nine acres. You don't have an application before you on a two acre piece. Uh, if, if the decision is, uh, made to deny the request, but consider a smaller area for the rezoning, a new application would need to be submitted on a defined two acre piece of property. We don't have that in front of us. We don't know to what piece of property to apply a rezoning if granted. So it would have to be a start over with a two acre piece.
Go back through the same?
Yes. Of course, if, if the intention would be, uh, that Mr. Smith provide, uh, a, a consideration of a two acre piece, then he may want to consider withdrawing, voluntarily withdrawing the request before you today and allowing for a two acre piece to be defined as part of the application and move forward in that fashion. I would leave that to Mr. Smith to decide whether he wanted to do that at this time.
Yes, sir.
The, what?
I'm sorry?
That's a yes, sir.
Okay. I believe, make sure that I'm saying this correctly, that your decision is to withdraw your request today on the nine point one nine and resubmit a request for a two acre piece of property.
Correct.
With that, there's no, uh, there's no reason for the board to take action on items K and L. Let the record reflect that the applicant has withdrawn his request for rezoning of the nine point one nine acres and will apparently seek to resubmit an application for rezoning and conditional use on a two acre piece of property to be defined. Thank you for your attendance today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So we still got, uh, we still got a few minutes.
Okay. Mr. President, if I may, moving to item M under my section. And, Mr. President, thank you for accommodating the schedule this morning. I very much appreciate that. What you have before you is a proposed resolution authorizing a change in voter precinct locations. We have discussed this with the board on a number of occasions. You're familiar with the need to make some precinct adjustments. Three of the precinct adjustments are in District Two. One of the precinct adjustments is in District One. I want to quickly go over those. Two fifteen Castle Woods East, which is currently at the Castle Woods Tennis Clubhouse, not the main clubhouse, the tennis clubhouse. Two sixteen Castle Woods West, which is currently at Vineyard Church. And two twenty-one YMCA, which is currently at the Flowood YMCA. Those are District Two precincts. We have adjustments to those. Castle Woods East and Castle Woods West. The proposal is to move both of those precincts to Word of Life Church on Lakeland Drive. Word of Life Church, as you know, is a new facility, was constructed in two thousand and fourteen, completed in two thousand and fourteen, and is fully ADA compliant. I've already checked it out. Has an enormous parking area and has plenty of square footage within the facility. So you have the compliance issues, you have the space covered, and you have the parking covered. Its visibility is unquestioned. Nobody misses that church when you drive up Lakeland Drive. And so it's a, it's a, a well-known location in the county. These are all considerations that go into making a precinct adjustment. For, for those two precincts then would be moved, uh, to, uh, Word of Life Church. Two twenty-one YMCA would be moved to the Mississippi Oregon Recovery Agency. They have a very large, open, uh, area in their facility that serves as a meeting location. They also have significant parking at that location. It is also on Lakeland Drive and can be seen from both directions of Lakeland Drive, highly visible. And we believe that the issues that we've had with YMCA, which is that we keep getting moved around in the building and we don't really know exactly where we're gonna set up our precinct in there, that, that issue can be solved. Another good thing about, uh, Oregon Recovery is that ingress and egress from the actual location of the precinct is, uh, not at the main entry. And so you can come in right at the point where the precinct would be set up. Parking and the entry point are right there, and so the rest of Mora's, uh, activities can go on without a significant interruption. All right? So we, that's why we like that. Uh, moving on to the precinct one change, uh, this would be one eleven Cleary, which has been historically located at the Cleary Volunteer Fire Department. That location is becoming problematic because of the space restrictions. This is a precinct that has grown through the years fairly significantly, and now parking and ingress and egress and getting folks out of the elements who are standing in line is becoming an issue. Uh, the Cleary Baptist Church has graciously agreed to serve as an alternate location for that precinct. I've met with the pastor and with the chairman of the deacons, and we've reviewed the facility. The facility is an excellent alternative, a very large gymnasium that has an open area. All of the requirements for ADA access, everything's ground level. The, uh, the restroom facilities are more than adequate to meet and accommodate everything. They have all the power issues, uh, uh, access to outlets around the gymnasium is covered. And so we would propose that those four precincts be, um, authorized for the upcoming election and that we allow our circuit clerk to make the proper notifications. That's the basis of the resolution. Any questions?
No. No. Um, Rodney, you, have you talked to anyone out of Castle Woods? Are they good with possibly?
I've talked to a few.
And what's the consensus out there?
Nobody's happy when you move anything, but this makes perfect sense.
Right, yeah, because they're having to move down the road instead of right there on top of them, but I understand the, the need.
We looked at the Vine Street Fire Department, but it's-
Right.
It's still-
Still would be problematic.
They gotta get out of the way.
That's right.
Greg, the best thing I think about, uh, Word of Life Church for the Castle Woods folks is that it's both on the way to work and coming home from work. There's not, they're not going out of the way.
Right.
They can make that transition.
Exactly.
Right there. We, we spend a lot of time trying to think through, uh, potential-
Now, you saying both, that would be two precincts in one? And I know it's huge enough to be able to separate them, so.
Yes, both Castle Woods.
Okay.
They can sort that out right there because they set it up so that it's easy to delineate which precinct is...
And you check with the church, and the church is good by setting up two different ones.
Correct. They can accommodate two precinct locations.
Right, great, thank you.
Or more.
Yeah, they're huge. Okay. That's the only question I had on that.
Okay.
So, do we need potential action on that, Greg?
Yes, make a motion to approve.
I make a motion that we approve these changes to the precincts.
I second. Motion from Mr. Wilcox, second is Keith. Any discussion? All papers say aye. All opposed?
Thank you, Greg.
You want to do Ian?
What time are we leaving?
Ten.
Within fifteen minutes.
When are you leaving? Figure about 10:15?
Yes.
We got time to get that, I believe. Then you'll be done.
Yeah, thank you. I won't be done, I'll be back.
Yeah, but I mean...
Yes, sir. As far as the vector control is concerned, we've got two proposals that are before the board. You've both, you've been provided with both proposals. I believe, is Mr. Machado here today?
Yes.
There we go, thank you. I haven't had a chance to actually meet with Mr. Machado, but he's representing mosquito control this morning. Board, you've had a chance to look at both of the proposals. The proposals are, as I explained at the work session, you've got two. One is from Vector Disease Control Incorporated, represented today by Mr. Brett Killingsworth, who is Jackson local. And then, we have Mississippi Mosquito Control, Inc. They have a presence in Jackson County and in other areas in Mississippi. And Mr. Wayne Machado, am I saying that right?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Machado is here on behalf of Mississippi Mosquito Control. Quickly, in summation, the vector disease control proposal is for a period of seven months, beginning April 15 through November the 15th this year, terminating on the 15th of November 2015. And without putting words in their mouth, basically treating this as a test run to see whether or not Rankin County desires to move in a more permanent fashion towards turnkey vector control services. For members of the public, just a very quick summation on this. The county has been responsible for its own vector control from the inception of our doing vector control. And we've not had any turnkey services provided for vector control. Brian Grantham with EOC capably heads up our vector control program. In the past, the board's decision about vector control has been limited to acquisition of chemical because we've had our own folks, we've had our own trucks, we've had our own spray rigs. And so, our program has not been about applying the chemical, it has been about acquiring the chemical that we want to use. In the past, we've had a, Mr. Jeff North, who is an entomologist, who provides some guidance on things like various diseases that we're seeing in the community, trapping, chemical rotation to avoid resistance, those kinds of... And so, what's being proposed today is markedly different. This would be turning over vector control to a third-party provider under a contract for a stated fee. They would be responsible for chemical, equipment, personnel, resistance issues, et cetera, trapping, reporting to the board about what they're finding. All of that would be turned over to them for a stated fee. That's the basis for...
Accept all liability.
Accept all liability associated with that. They would provide coverage, not only for their services, they would show Rankin County as an additional insured. As a part of the process, your legal staff and Ms. Bridget along helped greatly trying to make sure that we were on the straight and narrow about the bid law, whether or not that would be applicable. We found enough support to satisfy me that we are not subject to the bid law on this turnkey services. It's accepted under the bid law. We are able to informally work with, negotiate with the various providers. You have two that have showed up that are desiring to at least negotiate with you about a contract and offer proposed services. Vector Disease Control has offered the seven-month program for a full payment of $220,000 payable monthly with a proposed contract which will allow the county a 30-day out. That is, if we get 60, 90 days into this process and it's not working, we are able to give 30 days' notice and the contract terminates. Obviously, they're very interested in showing back up and continuing to do the work for the county, but we would take this as a test run. Mississippi Mosquito Control has offered a, although we indicated in our proposal request that we were looking for a short-term agreement, and I was concerned that the board would not enter into an agreement that extended beyond the term of this board, that we wanted to shut it down. They were open to discussing an alternative arrangement, but the proposal is for a 12-month contract, and the total amount of that contract is $366,000. And so, we've had a chance to evaluate that. I've sent both proposals to Brian and to Bob for review. I don't know if they have any comment, if you guys have any comments today from Bob and Eric.
One thing I don't know, Brian wants to come over and address the board, is the chemical that we have on stock already, which the board would consider if they move forward into a contract, that whoever gets the bid, if the bid is awarded, that they would repurchase from the county the stock that we have on hand at this time, if that's doable. I don't know the laws on that, or if it's...
Well, I think we talked about that the other day, Bob. And if, you know, if anything goes south, that we do, didn't we say we had a stock life of about two years? Is that right, Bridget? Something like that?
I have to take the following, this is ordered, at least a good four-year...
Right. So, if we did have anything go south or whatever, Bob, that we could pull that and use our guys to be able to still use the same chemical without having to go out and purchase some more?
And beside that, it's county property now. It would be subject to the same rules of disposition that we find with any other county property, which means that we can't just offer it to one individual and say, hey, come by. So, there are more issues than that, Bob. It's a good thought. We don't, if we go to turnkey services, we're not going to need the chemical. I don't know that we're there yet as far as the decision.
Just trying to make a recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, at this time, we would, Mr. Morrison, Mr. President, with your discretion, we can hear from the proposers.
We can do it within 10 minutes.
Yep. We got to do a short review. We want to make a quick summation on y'all's, and then we'll ask Mr. Machado.
That's what I reiterated last week, just turnkey program. You know, we have five to six dedicated trucks with new equipment, our own chemical. Y'all be, you know, named as the additional insured under our insurance. We'll have a dedicated team for the daytime to set traps, collect mosquitoes, larvicide standing water throughout the county. So, I mean, it's a full-time job and, you know, that's basically...
And we can use, you're going to be using, you could use our Rankin County residents to be employees. Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah.
You will be.
Will be?
Will be, yeah.
Okay.
And pay them the same, whatever y'all are paying them, so they won't take a hit.
I mean, that's one thing that I...
We were very adamant about.
Okay, sure. Yeah, that's not a problem.
Okay. They know the area and they know, I mean...
Yeah, they're actually the best guys to hire probably.
Right, okay.
You, I think before you stated that you buy chemical from multiple sources. You know, you were here when we took bids. Do you buy from both of those parties?
We do.
Why do y'all do that?
Why do we buy from both?
Yeah.
Keep everybody happy.
Competition brings the price down. So, you know, some of their, some of the products we use that, say, permethrin, for instance, they both sell permethrin. Permethrin, there's, you know, five or six people that make permethrin. Both of them are reputable companies, Univar and Adapco, they both make a pretty good permethrin product. Now, there's some products that we'll use, that we'll want to rotate products in because of resistance issues and stuff like that. And one vendor, Adapco, may be a sole source provider of that, and we may buy that straight from Adapco. But we do spread our merching around a little bit.
We currently have a set route that our guys do. I guess we do two times. How often do we run? Once, twice a week?
Yeah, well, they all, they work 20 hours a week, and they generally, 99% of the time, get their entire route done in their zone once a week.
So, will y'all continue to do what we've been doing?
Pretty much. We would break the county into treatment areas, and the size of the treatment area would be about the size that one spray truck could cover in a night. And, you know, we would have traps in each one of those treatment areas, and based on our trap numbers that we're seeing weekly, you know, we target those areas with our trucks and with our larvicide. But generally, that number of hours per week is probably about right, you know, spray truck wise, especially up in the middle of the, you know, the heat of the mosquito season.
So, if we have a road that you don't catch any mosquitoes on, are you not going to spray that road?
The whole county will be sprayed. It's just certain areas will probably be sprayed more often than others. It's not going to be the entire county, each road is going to get sprayed, you know, 20 times throughout the summer. It's going to be based on signs and based on the number of mosquitoes, the amount of disease that we're seeing, and on complaints and stuff like that we get from residents.
Like as in, I hadn't seen them come by my house, I want them by here?
Yeah.
Or either produce the tape that says, and the time of day that says we have been by there, but you were asleep.
Right.
Yeah.
Or mosquitoes are bad in the backyard, can you send a truck over to our street? Sure. I mean, we work for the citizens, we work for y'all, I mean, whatever.
No, wait a minute, say that again? No, you're not going over to treat somebody's backyard?
No, the street.
Oh, street, okay, street. I saw you said backyard to treat.
No, no, no.
Okay. That'd be strictly between them and your company.
Right, right.
Not us.
If they have, you know, if they're seeing a lot of mosquitoes in their backyard, then we could send a truck on their street and spray by their house.
I got you. So, you'll work hand-in-hand with Bob?
Yes, sure. However, y'all want us to do, you know, work hand-in-hand with him or either come present to the board, however y'all like it. Yeah, we'll have, we'll turn in spray maps and all that kind of stuff on a monthly basis. We can either give it to Brian and Bob, or we can present it to y'all, however y'all want to do it.
Brian would keep up with it if there's a problem. He would, I'm sure, let us know if he doesn't address it with you.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Gentlemen, good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Wayne Machado with Mississippi Mosquito Control, Inc.
And I'm Steve Pavlovich, the entomologist with Mississippi Mosquito Control, Inc.
As Craig has indicated, we are suggesting a 12-month program rather than a six-month program. And what we're doing is elevating the current program from a less spray-by-the calendary, and it's Tuesday, we need to be in such and such area, to a program that's based on scientific data. The county would, we would have a number of traps in permanent locations around the county. These traps would be, samples would be collected three times a week, brought back to the lab, identified, counted. And this would be a strong basis for our spray program, also citizen complaints and that sort of thing. Additionally, because our program is suggesting a focus on virus surveillance and suppression, we would also have a series of traps that are not in permanent locations, but are moved around weekly. These are called west Nile traps or gravity traps, and rather unique in that, there is one species of mosquito that transmit west Nile. This trap attracts only that species. And it collects only the female of the species, which is obviously the one you want to look at, it's the one that's biting. Those collections are, as I said, moved around each week. They're picked up in the morning if they're in operation, under refrigeration, brought back to the lab, processed, and sent to the state lab for identification, not identification, but for processing as to whether or not there's any virus activity. If there's any virus activity, acted, annoted, rather, we can then, rather than wait for the state to do a sometimes two-week turnaround, we have our own laboratories, and we can do a turnaround just a day or two. So, it's a lot of focus on virus suppression. And the protocol we use is something that's been vetted by both Mississippi and Louisiana boards of health and have approved this, and it's worked well for us for years now. Addition of that, we'll also have programs for, if you're having a festival, for instance, where we can apply a barrier that prevents mosquitoes from coming into the area. We can do this before the festival so that people are not there while we're spraying. There's a public education program we're suggesting because a lot of problems that people have, they're causing their own backyards. So, we can show them what they can do to prevent mosquitoes and what the county is doing for them. We are open for any suggestions you gentlemen may have to alter what we are suggesting. Incidentally, it's not written in here, but it's certainly written in here, we would use only Rankin County residents as employees. So, that would be part of it.
So, you have your own vehicles and all the same?
Yes, we, we're currently operating two counties here in Mississippi as well as five parishes in Louisiana and some areas in Georgia as well.
Which two counties?
Hancock and Jackson, both coastal counties.
The equipment we use, by the way, the ground equipment, has a program, and it's a computer program that tracks the vehicles, how fast it's going, and adjusts the amount of spray that's being applied. So, you're not underapplying or overapplying. It also records where that vehicle was, what time it was there, which direction it was heading. Was it spraying or not spraying at that particular time? It produces a record that's available to you.
You know, I'm a little bit concerned about the 12-month, and I heard what you said, but, you know, I'm kind of wondering why you would not back off to the seven-month instead of the 12-month?
It's something that we can do. When we looked at the actual county itself, I think one of the things that was lacking was the disease surveillance. And part of our program would be to actually monitor that mosquito or those couple of mosquitoes that would transmit the disease and look for them all year round. It's not uncommon that you would have west Nile being transmitted in even the winter months and be able to respond at that time. We certainly are open to providing a shorter-term program. Certainly, it's one of those things that we feel that has a better plan of action, especially with some of the additional services that we offer, public education and prep work as well as larvicide throughout the year. The proposal that you have in front of you is actually treating the ditches, getting ahead of the mosquito larvae before the season even starts so that at this point of the year, we've already got the mosquitoes bringing the ditches out in the woods that have already been in production for probably a month. And so, you're addressing the adults and working on the larva mosquitoes as they come forward, but you can put out prophylactic treatments as well as to kill the mosquito larvae in the ditches and surrounding areas.
Okay, got it.
It's just unfortunate that we asked for a seven-month contract and you gave us a year, so it's kind of difficult to compare apples to apples.
Sure. Well, we felt that the annual program, the 12-month program was of better value. You're getting a lot more service than you do on a seven-month or a six-month program.
It's just hard to compare apples to apples, though, when you go 12-month and one goes 7-month.
Well, as Steve said, if you're locked into six months, six and a half months is all you want, we can go back and review this.
But one problem, we're running out of time.
Yeah, we're... Because we, I think we plan on kicking it off April 15th, didn't we?
Yeah.
Was that the...
All right. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Y'all want to take action on this now or what?
Well, that's a good question. As you know, I think the intent of the board, not putting words in the president's mouth, but I think the intent of the board is to go ahead and recess so that those who need to or want to attend Judge Fairley's memorial can do that. I understand the board intends to reconvene to go through the remainder of our agenda for today. It could be, if the board's not prepared to make a decision right now on what you've heard about vector control, that you could do that after the recess. Depends totally on what you guys want to do.
I'd rather wait. I'd like to have some, be able to have some discussion.
Yes, sir.
So, I'd rather wait. And I think we need, we're going to run out of time.
You need a motion to recess till 1:30?
Bishop, second Mr. Wilcox, recess till 1:30. Hate to cut it short and quick, but we need to. All papers say aye? All opposed?
Aye.
All opposed?
Oh, my goodness.
This was supposed to be just for me or for everybody?
No, I'm not going for anybody, but I was going to explain it to...